Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is January 11th at 6:00 PM. Now I'll call the town council meeting to order. Just want to welcome everyone back. This is our first meeting for 2022. And it's good to see all of you here. I hope everyone had a safe and happy holiday. That being said, if we could please take a moment of silence to acknowledge the loss of Town Council Tom O'Connor. Tom was very passionate, to say the least, about serving on the council and other various committees for several years. From all of us here this evening, we offer our deepest sympathy and caring wishes to Tom's wife Evelyn and Tom's entire family and friends. Thank you all. And according to Mass General Law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in the audience who's recording, if you could please identify yourselves.
I don't see anyone.
Thank you, Don. This meeting is being held virtually through Zoom webinar to the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Jeanie, after this afternoon, I don't believe we had anyone signed up for public comments.
That's correct. No one signed up for public comment.
Thank you. Council comments?
Mike, if I may. So I just wanted to give the council a little update. The planning board has held their first public hearing with regards to zoning bylaw changes that are required under the E codification. They will be doing another public hearing because there were so many different changes. It's going to take a couple of them to complete it. But they're expecting that to be on the agenda in February. I believe it's February 1st, their first meeting. And I will be there in case anyone has any questions or if the public has any questions, I would be more than happy to jump in with them and help out. But I just wanted to give everyone an update. It is going along. It's a very slow process, but we will get it to us and we will get everything electronically done so that it'll be easy to search. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. The other other comment I'd like to make is, Mary, if you have your ice cakes off, the rink is open. Everyone's enjoying that. And if you have a manager's report for this evening, we're all on you.
Okay, thank you. As this is the first meeting of the year, I suppose a Happy New Year greetings are in order from me as well. So Happy New Year to everybody. I'm hopeful and optimistic that the respite that the holiday season provided some time for all of us to sort of refresh and recollect and move forward with some renewed optimism for Business Affairs of East Long Meadow in 2022. In that vein, moving forward, Community Paradigm Associates has, of course, listed their advertisement for the successor to the town manager position. And applications were closed as of January 4th. My understanding from Mr. Petron, who was the gentleman that was at your meeting a meeting or so ago, is that he was going to take this this period of time between the 4th of January and perhaps January 18th to vet the references of the applicants and whittle the applicant pool down to an appropriate number for the interviews by the local screening committee. He then advised me that that those interviews could be accomplished in late January or hopefully the first week of February. On COVID news, unfortunately, the virus continues to reign supreme in the community. The report I sent to you last Thursday talked about our positivity rate in town being 10.91%. The Thursday evening, there was a Board of Health meeting at which it was reported that for the week ended January 7th, the positivity rate in town is actually 16.31%. So that's considerably higher. It's the highest it's ever been. And the Board of Health is struggling with the issue of reinstituting a mask mandate. If any of you have some extra time, I would recommend that you view their meeting that was held on January 6th. And they will be meeting again this week, whether it's tomorrow or Thursday night. I'm not sure. Because there's an awful lot of information that's shared by Dr. Jobins in particular with respect to the hospitalization rates and pediatric cases and so forth. So I think that issue of the mask mandate is not has not been resolved in its final version as of yet. But we continue to struggle. And I guess that's my point in letting the council know that there are a lot of cases out there. And we're doing our best to cope with them. It's infecting our workplace, fire department staff, the police department staff, DPW, our three departments in particular that have been hard hit. Health departments had some issues. So it strains our resources to accomplish what we need to get done. But there's really no answer to it because even if your case is minor, you have to quarantine and make sure you, you know, are symptom free when you return to the workplace. We are looking into the acquisition of those home tests that the Commonwealth has acquired. I've received several emails that I forwarded to Steve and to Tammy regarding access through combis so that the town can acquire those home testing kits. And Tammy, I know, is working hard on that. The I'm pleased to tell you that the building renovation at the senior center is coming along swimmingly. I stopped there yesterday to check it out. The ceiling is in, the new door is in, the new door jamb has been installed. The DPW is doing a great job cleaning up that space. We're just waiting for flooring. And then tomorrow, I'm meeting with the district Hamden's representative in Wales and myself for East Long Meadow to create the budget for fiscal '23. Now that we have a full-time officer, she needs a she needs a desk. She needs a printer in all three communities. So we're going to address all those needs. And I guess it's just a heads up that the town manager's budget this year, which includes the veterans' district budget, will be a tad higher than you've seen in the past. Negotiations are ongoing for three of our collective bargaining unions in town. We're hopeful that some additional conversations in the next week or two will resolve the as-yet unresolved issues there. So we're quite hopeful that that takes place. One other issue about the council on aging building, that boiler repair work that you approved from Free Cash a couple of meetings ago is underway. The boilers are being removed. That work started, I think it was yesterday or perhaps last late last week. So that cellar will be cleaned out of all that heavy duty equipment. And it'll create some storage space for the other departments which so desperately need it in addition to the storage that the COA itself needs. Karen Corbin and Ryan went to Pittsfield on December 21st to accept the town's Community Compact IT grant that they applied for. It was a held it was presented in a ceremony from conducted by Governor Lieutenant Governor Palito in the amount of $114,000 was the amount that we received. And this, like many of the other grants that we've obtained this year, will obviate the need to have those projects on our capital plan. The the IT grant is for disaster recovery. And Ryan Quimby indicated that that's a plan that he had in mind for a capital project a couple of fiscal years down the road. So that need will be avoided. We've also applied for the MGM grant. The this is the Community Mitigation Fund grant. It expired December 31st. And the Casino Gaming Commission kept sending us emails essentially begging us to apply for this $100,000. And we were desperate to find a legitimate nexus so that we could in good conscience apply for the money. A lot of communities around here were having the same problem determining what community need they could establish was created or impacted or exacerbated by the casino operation. Last year at this time, I did a survey of all the department heads and no one could really articulate with clarity a reason or a project that could be funded and was necessary as a result of the casino operation. I mean, we had some suggestions of traffic studies and cameras and things of that nature that were rejected when we posited them to the gaming commission. However, Karen and Bethany worked hard and came up with an idea that the commission has at least enthusiastically acknowledged. It's a petition for approximately $75,000 or $80,000 to establish a portal on our town's website, which would support local businesses trying to recover their economic health as a result of COVID. So it's part of the Rapid Recovery Grant that's being administered by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. But these additional funds hopefully will be awarded to East Long Meadow so that we can proceed with the assistance to our local business community. And it will also allow us potentially to streamline our permitting process on the website. And that's a need that we've talked about many times in the past. The Recreation Department, at long last, has succeeded in getting their approval from the IRS to for the 501(c)(3) nonprofit status of the East Long Meadow Foundation. It's spent a long time coming, something Donna and I talked about well over a year ago. And my hope, as I said in my report, is that the establishment of this 501(c)(3) will allow for private fundraising and will help us to segregate and keep segregated all these various sports associations that fundraise and look to the Recreation Department for assistance or for bookkeeping and things of that nature that we'd really like to keep separate. So the hope is that it'll provide a venue for private residents as well as corporate entities to support the activities in the Recreation Department that they feel strongly about. And in that vein, as Mike mentioned, the skating rink was filled up today with water. That's, you know, just another task that DPW does to assist with town operations that probably goes under the radar. When the rink was assembled and it was ready, there was no doubt in anybody's mind that Daryl Keane was going to get a crew out there and take care of it, and he did so. So certainly the weather cooperated today. So I forwarded the the list of rules and regulations that are going to govern the operation of the rink to your your members earlier today. And the recreation schedule is out of sight. Donna sent me an email last week that was about a page and a half long that articulated the various activities that the department is conducting now. And I alluded to some of them in the report. There basketball, the rink liner, the ski club has begun. There's an introductory program to theater. There's biddy ball beginning in January, spring sports and camp registration. So they, as usual, have a ton of things going on. And the school building committee met last Wednesday. It meets monthly to discuss certain provisions in terms of the architecture and the designer selection process that the school has to that the town in the school district have to comply with in order to follow through on the MSBA program. I did attach their last agenda, just so you have it. And I now understand that from Gordon Smith that all of those agendas are going to be posted each week as will the minutes of the meetings. So the only other thing I want to say in open session is that we did settle one other longstanding litigation against the town. It was through an MCAD settlement. There's no financial exposure to the town. What I'm taking from it, though, is a very definite learning experience that we have to buttress our HR resources without question. Because if we fail to do that, there's going to be a lot of additional settlements of this nature that we'd like very much to avoid. So and I'll report more on that issue in executive session. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Does anyone have any questions for Mary at this time? Okay, I'd just like to take time to thank the five residents that have joined our screening committee and are volunteering their time. And Andy Fraser was with us last year, and he will chair the committee, joined along with Larry Levine, Rich Pacero, Jeff Milliken, and James Walsh. So that makes up our five-member screening committee. And they're ready to go and already started communicating with John Cutcher from Community Paradigm. At this time, I'll approve or I'm looking for a motion to approve the December 14th open session minutes, please.
I make a motion to approve the December 14th, 2021, open session minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Can we have a motion and second? Any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing and seeing none. This is the roll call, required roll call vote. And I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you. Don't have anything under communications and correspondence this evening. And I'm showing 618. Click this in line for our first public hearing of the evening. We do have two public hearings scheduled for this evening. The reason for our 615 meeting is to approve a liquor license transfer of a wine and malt beverages retail package store license by Pride Operating LLC, doing business as Pride at 13 North Main Street. Council members are across the top of the board. I'm Michael Payne. To my right is Kathleen Hill. Moving across the page, we have Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Don Anderson, and Connor O'Shea. Jeanie, could you read the legal notices to record, please?
Sure. Notice hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that Pride Operating LLC, doing business as Pride, has applied for a liquor license transfer of a wine and malt beverages retail package store license at 13 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, January 11, 2022, at 6:15 via Zoom webinar for the council. Jean, our quagladdy town clerk, clerk of council.
Thanks, Jeanie. Our applicant, we have two applicants signed up. And I can actually see that it looks like Marcy's in the audience. Don, could you bring one of those applicants in to give us a brief scenario on the situation?
Yep. I'm sorry, Mike. Who's the other?
I mean, it would be it would be Nick Amanti or Marcy Costa. It looks like Marcy's there as an attendee at least. And there's Nick on the screen now.
Yep, thank you. I got him.
Okay, great. Hi, Nick, how you doing?
Hi, good, good. Yeah, I'll be presenting tonight. Marcy's here with me, too. So if you guys are ready, I'll take it away.
Yeah, Jeanie's worked on this quite a bit. And I see everything's in order here. So if you can give us a brief explanation, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, and thank you. You guys have been, you know, Jeanie's been great and helping us. So so thank her. So good evening. Thanks for your time tonight. My name's Nick Amanti. I'm an attorney with Fitzgerald Law with offices right next to you guys at 46 Center Square in East Long Meadow. I'm here on behalf of the petitioners, Pride Operating LLC. They're requesting approval of an application to transfer an alcoholic beverage wine and malt package store license. It's from Pride Stores LLC to Pride Operating LLC. So Pride Operating, they're purchasing the alcoholic beverage licenses currently held by Pride Stores. There's going to be no operational changes. There's going to be no changes to the license premise. The managers are all going to be remaining the same. The employees are going to be remaining the same. All of the individuals which you and the License Commission has dealt with in the past are going to be remaining the same, including Marsha Medina, who is the current manager of the LLC, and Jim Channing, who is Pride's general counsel. So they'll both be continuing to oversee the business of Pride Operating LLC. Basically, what's going on here is this is this transfer is the is part of a larger asset purchase of Pride in general by this Arc Light Energy Partners Fund. And in connection with that, Pride Operating LLC is a subsidiary entity that's been created specifically to purchase the liquor licenses, to hold all of the operational permits and licenses necessary to run the convenience stores and the gas stations. So with me is I see Jim Channing's here. Who is, like I said, he represents Pride Stores and will be remaining with Pride Operating. Marcy Costa's here, who represents Archlight on the bigger, overall, larger asset purchase. We're here and happy to answer any questions you may have. We've submitted a complete application. And if you find everything to be in order, we would respectfully request approval of the application for transfer of the alcoholic beverages package store license from Pride Stores LLC to Pride Operating LLC.
Great. Thank you for that. And at this time, we'll open up the public portion of the hearing. And I'll ask Don if anyone is in the audience signifying that they'd like to speak under the public portion of our meeting.
Not so far. Appears not, Mike.
Thanks, Don. So at this time, we'll close the public portion. And I will ask the council if they have any questions for the applicant. Don?
Question, this only, I mean, at the moment, there are only two Pride stations in East Long Meadow. There used to be three, but only the one at the Rotary are near the Rotary is the one we're speaking of. The other one does not have a liquor license. So it's just this one?
It's 13 North Main Street. I believe that's the one by the that is the one by the Rotary.
Okay, and the other one is doesn't sell liquor. I take it.
So they're, yeah, so they don't need, you know.
Kathy, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mike. In Attorney Costa's cover letter, she states that proof of workers' comp and liquor liability insurance shall be provided prior to issuance of the license. So my question would be that should the motion that will soon put forward include that as part of the clause saying contingent upon successful successfully obtaining those two liability coverages?
Oh, I I think that's that's fine. How I would do it is I think you can approve it and send it to the ABCC. And then the ABCC can do their review. And then it would come back to you. And it just wouldn't you wouldn't issue it until those were provided to you. I know those are very expensive to get. So I don't think, you know, they they wouldn't would rather have you, you know, issue it as as late as possible and not have to be paying for these very expensive liability insurance while they're not operating the station.
Thank you.
And just Attorney Marcy Costa, everyone. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We are in the process of finalizing those insurance binders. So we're hoping to actually have those affidavits to you by the end of the week. That is the plan.
My question would be, Jeff is the manager that's currently managing right now. Is that manager staying in place?
Yeah, so all of the managers. Is it Jeremy who's going to be the manager?
Yeah, Jeremy Skiba, he's here as well as an attendee. So it's the same licensed manager, the same operational. Everything's proposed to be the same from a non-ownership standpoint.
The only reason I'm asking, too, is our next order of business here would be to present a motion. And it might be be who would solve to vote to approve the transfer and the manager as well at the same time. And so if the manager's saying, you're saying that that might be a recommendation. Any other questions from the council? Ralph?
So, Mike, I've got a question with regards to the license and the effective date of the transfer. If we voted in tonight, the license doesn't actually become effective until after it goes to the ABCC and they approve it. So do we, I'm assuming it's Jeanie's requirement to know when that gets approved and when they have to swap everything over. Because obviously, if, what is it? Pride Stores LLC doesn't have the liquor license, they can't continue to operate. And I don't know if that's already been done. It's sort of like a catch 22. When do the stores get bought? And if they're bought and you don't have a liquor license under that name, can you continue to sell or not? Is there a period in between that? Or how does that work? And I guess my question would be if Jeanie knows or if one of the attorney knows if there's a delay in between.
Well, I can answer first. Every transfer is different. Assuming that it's approved tonight, tomorrow, we would send it electronically to the ABCC. They now have an electronic portal for submissions. And I would think it'd take it two weeks anyway for them to approve it. And I've been working closely with Nick and Marcy. And I just made a note about those two things that we would still need to release the license. So it would it would stay with me until it was ready all around. And I would, I guess I would look to Nick or Marcy to let me know. And if the council would just trust me with that or I could, you know, work with Kathy, who's chair of the licensing committee, to keep her abreast of what's happening, it's up to you and how you want to handle that.
So if I can follow up real quick, who currently, as of today, owns 13 North Main Street and operates it? Is it Pride Operating LLC?
The ownership of the property is the Pride Operating, is the is the new owner. However, with the ABCC's assistance, we worked with them. And so the current licensee is actually still leasing the liquor store and operating the store. So once the transfer is fully approved, if the if you all approve it this evening and it goes to the ABCC, then after that approval process, the issuance, the full ownership, that lease would end and the full ownership would take over. But because, as you said, it's a catch 22 of timing, we wanted to make sure that operationally, legally, everything was still able to run smoothly while we continued the transfer process. And we have also been working with the ABCC. So they've received kind of an initial overview of the transfer applications to be able to start reviewing the financials and all of that stuff kind of parallel to while we are meeting with all of you to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So Jean, Nick and I will keep working with you and make sure that we're all on the same page, get you anything you need while we continue the process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And we'll roll call vote to do that. And then I'll entertain a motion. I need us to close. Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
And as I stated previously, I'll entertain a motion, but I believe we should approve the manager as well. I'll entertain a motion, but I, I believe we should approve the manager as well as the transfer. If that's the direction the council wants to move, if Kathy and Seth out, accept the motion.
Sure, I move to approve a liquor license transfer of a wine and malt beverages retail package store license by Pride Operating LLC, DBA Pride at thirteen North Main Street. And then contingent upon proof of workers' compensation and liquor liability insurance provided prior to the issuance of the license with, was there a change? I thought the manager was staying the same, so what would I?
What do we? We're just approving, you know, adding the motion to approve the existing manager, so we don't have to come back and.
Okay. And with the existing manager continuing operation?
And I will second all of that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, thank you both. This requires a roll call vote as well, and I'll start with Connor.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Ralph?
Yes.
Hey, thank you all, thank you for taking the time to join us this evening, and best of luck.
I didn't get to vote.
I missed, okay, something got cut out, Kathy?
Yes.
For the record, it's unanimous, how's that?
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm showing six thirty-three here. And our second public hearing is to approve a liquor license transfer of a wine and malt beverage on premise license by Hunan Garden, Inc., doing business as Ichiban Restaurant, located at four twenty-two North Main Street to Vicky Bond four twenty-two Incorporated, doing business as Vicky Bond Restaurant. Again, the council members this evening are, I'm Michael Payne, we have Kathleen Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Don Anderson, and Connor O'Shea with us this evening. And Jeannie, could you read this legal notice into the record, please?
Sure. Notice is hereby given under Chapter one thirty-eight of the General Laws that Hunan Garden Incorporated, DBA Ichiban Restaurant, has applied for a liquor license transfer of a wine and malt beverages on premises license at four twenty-two North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. to Ichiban four two two, Inc., DBA Ichiban Restaurant. The Town Council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, at six thirty PM via Zoom webinar. For the council, Jean R. Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thanks, Jeannie. Don, do we have an applicant, or Jeannie, can you reference an applicant, or that might be in the audience this evening, or, or could you fill us in on the specifics?
I can fill you in, so this restaurant is currently owned by the wife, it's a husband-wife team, the wife owns it with the, with a corporation. The transfer is going to the husband under a new corporation name. And during the renewal process, they informed me that the corporation name was changing, and they weren't aware that this transfer application had to take place. So I've been working very closely with both of them, and because I'm not familiar with this type of transfer, when I received their application, I sent it to one of my contacts at the ABCC, asking her to review it for me. So I've been working very closely with the ABCC rep, with the, the husband and wife team, which there's a slight language barrier, and they had someone that was assisting them call me to get more guidance. So it's been a step-by-step process. At this point, I feel that the application is complete and satisfactory to me. Nothing else is changing, it's just the transfer of the corporation name from one to the other. And I don't see the, anybody in the audience that would have been the assistant, and he, he was, he said he wouldn't be available tonight anyway, so I was hoping I could speak for the applicant.
This situation being similar to our last public hearing, are we to assume the manager, the existing manager is still staying with the DBA?
The manager's the same, and it's the, it's, it's the, the wife.
So at this time, we'll open up the public portion of the hearing this evening. Don, do you see anyone in the audience?
I do not.
Quick enough, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Council comments? Hearing, seeing none, we'll roll call vote, close the public hearing, followed by a motion. And close, I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion, and I believe we should approve the manager as well. In the motion, it's going to be, Ralph, do you have a motion for it?
I do, so Mike, I motion to approve a liquor license transfer of a wine and malt beverage on premises license by Hunan Garden, Inc., DBA Ichiban Restaurant at four twenty-two North Main Street to Ichiban four twenty-two, Inc., DBA Ichiban Restaurant, with the existing manager remaining the same.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you both, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing, it's being done, a roll call vote, Connor?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you all. Under number nine, orders of the day, licensing matters. We'll entertain a motion to approve a one-day license for the Masonic Temple.
I motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Masonic Temple, forty-three Chestnut Street, on January sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two, at five to ten PM for a baby shower.
Second.
Motion, a second discussion. Hearing, seeing none, we'll roll call vote, starting with Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Don?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve an entertainment license for brewers practitioners.
I move to approve an entertainment license for brew practitioners, LLC, forty-five Baldwin Street, contingent upon subsequent approval from the planning board.
I will second the motion.
Discussion?
Mike?
Yeah.
So the entertainment license that we're actually approving states occasional music, trivia night, comedy show, nothing loud, mostly acoustic. I had asked Jeannie to add on, they're under special permit, so I want to make sure that the planning board was good with it, and that's why we added that, because it's up to them to look at what types of entertainment are actually allowed and what isn't, based on the area that they're in, if there's any residential properties or anything. So I just wanted to, to give the rest of the counselors a head up on that.
Thank you for that information, and any other discussion? Hearing, and seeing none, we'll roll call vote, starting with Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
Under financial matter.
You missed one.
Nope, we've got one, we have an update.
Oh, okay, thank you for that, Jeannie?
I believe Kathy's handling this one.
Yeah?
Okay. So this update is already known to the council, but for the benefit of the public, I wanted to mention two items of news that have become apparent to us through Jeannie's notification in the last sixty days. And the first one is that based on the population, according to the recent two thousand and twenty census, the, our, our numbers in East Long Meadow have gone up enough so that the ABCC has issued us two additional all alcohol licenses. As for our listeners, how many licenses a municipality gets is based on the population. So there's a specific formula that the ABCC uses to determine how many a town or city would get. And in this case now, we will be adding two more, and by all alcohol, think in terms of a restaurant who may serve beer and wine and hard alcohol. The second one is that we were notified by the ABCC that one of our businesses in town that holds a package store license violated the ABCC rulings by selling to underage customers. I'm not clear specifically on how the ABCC became aware of that information. I do know that back in the fall, the Jeannie received, and not, not an anonymous call, but a call from a resident town, in town, who wanted to remain anonymous in the whole process, saying that she was aware that this particular business had served to a nineteen-year-old. So, and the police did look into that, but long story short, it found its way to the ABCC, who takes those matters and any potential violations very seriously, and apparently conducted surveillance, couldn't think of the right word, and in fact caught the, some underage teenagers who had a false ID from, issued from the state of Maine, being served multiple six-packs of, of beer. Contingent upon that, then Jeannie and I attended a Zoom hearing on, on the violation back in December. And the subsequent ruling by the ABCC is that the, their decision is to suspend for one day the liquor license of this particular business, but it will be held in abeyance for two years. And what that means is so long as this particular business has no other demerits, that's my word, violations under ABC ruling during this two years, then the the violation, I mean, the consequence will not be served. But should they have a misstep, then they absolutely will suspend the license for one day. And of course, we would be notified of that, and it would then fall to us at the local level to see that that was enforced. The end.
I can add on to that, so when Kathy talked about receiving a call from a resident about possible violation of serving underage, we talked with the resident and urged them to go to the police, and there was dialogue with the police and the resident that never panned out to anything. And then we heard about the violation from the ABCC, and apparently someone, I don't know if it was the same incident, but a resident called the ABCC, and that's why it was investigated. When we first got the phone call from the resident, I called the ABCC for some guidance, and they said they could either act on their own, or we could handle it with our own town, with our police, which we tried to do, but I think the resident backed away at that point. So I don't know if it's the same person, or if it's a separate incident, but the ABCC can actually act on a resident's call about a possible violation, it can go either way.
And I would like to add that, I believe, based on the, how the the surveillance was conducted, and that was, you know, brought forth in the hearing itself, the, this group is extremely vigilant about the upholding of all matters, ABCC, by package stores, restaurants, and, and such. And I think that's a good thing, and I also, I asked to say this on the agenda, to be present to report this, that it's, it's, it's an item of insurance for us that the ABCC takes these matters seriously, and that nobody gets a pass from it. You know, they don't say, oh, that's unfortunate, you know, next time do it this way, or next time don't serve to a minor. They take it extremely seriously, and our residents and the holders of licenses should be aware of that.
All right, well, thank you for the update, Jeannie, Kathy, and all the legwork that you did. The next order of business under financial matters is.
Hi, everyone, we'll just say.
Hi.
Hi, don't we have to call ourselves to order though, Don? Yes, we're just gonna take a quick minute and call ourselves to order, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Officially open your meeting, and we'll pick it up.
Awesome, thank you, I'll call to order the January eleventh School Committee meeting, it is now six forty-seven. And if we can just start with a roll call, Pam, do you want to pick us up?
Sure.
Gregory Thompson.
Antonella Rochilla.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Sarah Trilio.
Bill Fonseca.
Elizabeth Marcy and Boucher.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, thank you for joining us. I was starting to say, for the general public that's weighing in, that we're mandated by the Charter under Section six point one, and our new Charter publication, the information's on page, page sixteen, to have an annual meeting with the school committee. So we will accomplish that tonight, and the point of this meeting basically is to review the financial condition of the town. The financial information that we'll provide this evening hopefully is guidance, and guidance only to help the school committee prepare the budget prior to the surprise marriage. I did spend quite a bit of time with Mary talking about the financial condition of the town. She gave me a very well-presented document that lays everything out methodically, but I will defer to Mary to speak on that, the condition of the town, and hopefully I see Steve up in the corner here, which can complement Mary's report, so, thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Mike. Well, as President Kane indicated, this meeting, this joint meeting is incident to Section six point one of the Charter, and it's occurring a month or so earlier than it has in past years due to the indulgence of President Kane. Recently, Mr. Kane, and Mr. Page, and Sarah Trilio, Ralph, Ralph Page, I already said him, and Bill Fonseca met with Gordon Smith and myself to see if we could just open the door of communication a little bit wider this year, with respect particularly to the school committee budget. We want to bridge the divide that I felt somewhat existed last year during budget time, and I wanted to give the school committee, as well as the council and any financial oversight committee members, more of an opportunity to have a better understanding of the import and the difficulties that not just the school district, but certainly many, many of the town departments are facing this year in particular. So I'm gonna be brief in my remarks, because Steve is going to give some specificity with respect to balances that are available. But I just wanted to start by saying that I guess it, I guess it's undoubtable by any of us that the last couple of years presented a bit of fiscal uncertainty with the onset of the pandemic, and the closure of Town Hall, and the shutdown of restaurants, and no one really knew what to expect as a result of this pandemic in, in the, in the fiscal world, never mind emotional and physical health, those issues aside. So, but we've gone through it, we survived. Unfortunately, we had some furloughs of employees in East Long Meadow, but we never invaded our stabilization or our free cash in order to balance our budget. And I'm very proud of the accomplishments that the town employees achieved during this, this period. The town and school employees, don't let me, don't let my omission of, of school be interpreted as any sort of a disregard, please. We are now on very solid, in my opinion, very solid financial. Uh we are now on very solid, in my opinion, very solid financial footing based on the the balances of free cash, stabilization and other data that Steve, as I said, will supply with specificity. And I truly tonight really just have one goal from this conversation, and that is I'm hopeful and optimistic that the more conversation we can have uh with myself as the as the town manager, with Gordon Smith as a school superintendent and the members of the school committee and department heads. I just want to make the council as the appropriations arm of the community aware of the desperate need we have to increase staffing in some departments more than others. And the concomitant issue that arises from that, and that is space to put those staff. Because we have no desks available. We have no space to put a desk. Every time we hire a new person, we have to figure out where we're going to squeeze them in. And that's not a pleasant experience um for me or for any department head or for the new employee. So we're trying to create a professional environment in town, and I think we've done that. Um I think we we've established a a bar that people are content with and we continuously strive to do better, but I want our our physical surroundings to match the effort that's put out um in terms of energy and and capacity by our department heads. So my goal, as I started to say, is just to to educate the council as best I can to the drastic need, and I don't mean to be melodramatic. So I think those of you who know me know I'm, I I hope you know that I don't tend to be melodramatic. So when I tell you that the need is dramatic, it's dramatic. And specifically in our finance department and in our H R department. Uh those two departments in particular, Steve's office has operated on a shoestring since he's walked into town hall. We are desperate for additional help in that department. Some of which can be managed, I think, by improving our software and some of our capabilities. And I guess the the takeaway from that is we have a lot of free cash. So if there's software out there that we can investigate that will improve our operations, I would encourage you, starting in January with this conversation, to please consider that favorably if it ever appears on your agenda going forward. Our H R department no disrespect, is in shambles. It's in shambles. Uh I have an H R director who is pretty much in tears every single day or close to it. Uh working well beyond the thirty seven and a half hours. I get emails from her day and night, weekends, doesn't matter. I don't think the lady sleeps. Desperately trying to manage not only the retirees benefits in the absence of Corinne, we've got a new benefits administrator um who's desperately trying to uh decipher some of the existing policies and procedures and create his own. Um there is software available that's an adjunct to Munis that will help in these regards. So I don't want to get into the weeds with you tonight because it it's probably a little premature, but I want to I want to plant the seed that we have needs. We have serious needs. And the good news is we have the means to um address those needs, I think, um this year particularly. So a couple of things come to mind uh in addition to finance and H R. You know, the council has encouraged department heads to plan um succession plans. And it's not really a it's not, it's not feasible without budget uh accommodations to do those things. So several of your public safety departments are anxious to achieve deputy status. Uh the police department is on the verge of appointing a lieutenant provided some of our union issues can be uh satisfactorily resolved. D P W, uh as I mentioned, Daryl Keen during my uh town manager report, these guys go the limit. And Bruce has never once in the thirty months I've been working for the town of East Long Meadow, he's never once said no to anything I've ever asked him to do. It gets done and it gets done timely and and well. So if the Heritage Park development goes through, as we've uh tried to advocate for under our capital program this year, D P W will be impacted in terms of uh maintenance, ongoing maintenance of that development as well. And even if it doesn't go through, they are responsible for all the fields that that the town uses, for all the recreational uh activities that go on that were the subject of the um information that was disseminated to you in December about that. So every department has its own niche. Every one of them could use more help, but I'm trying to focus your attention on the ones that I think are the most dramatic in nature. And I don't mean to to leave the school out of it. I know that they feel very strongly about some of the positions that they've lost uh over the last couple of years. And I just want our process this year to be more open and more explanatory. And I also don't want the council to forget the uh number of grants that we've received that are uh that we've worked through. ARPA money, for example, is two and a half million dollars that we've spent this year alone on three huge water main replacement projects that were all on the capital program. So the fact that we do not have to approve those capital projects and finance them, whether through bonding or through the general fund, the ARPA money has substituted for that. So that money is going to be available to be either rolled back into the general fund or not spent through a bond. And those are savings. This M G M grant that I mentioned a couple of minutes ago may provide for that permitting software that we'd like to have. The I T grant that Ryan and Karen got is gonna is gonna pay for the disaster recovery. So these are all infrastructure needs that would have to be financed on the backs of the taxpayers that ARPA has provided uh an option to us to avoid that spending by the local taxpayers, not the rest of us federal taxpayers. But in any case, um I said I was going to be short. I hope that's short enough. And I do want to defer to Steve um with some of the particulars because he did take the time as requested uh to put together a listing with some specificity of the particular accounts that we have, just so you know. And we can certainly update these at your pleasure. Of how much money is available to us in the various funds in which it sits. So with that, Steve.
Mike, sorry, Mike, if you want to let me. No, that's fine. I I this this is working perfectly. They made a great introductory and Steve has all the facts and figures. And I believe that will be helpful for everyone here, including our school committee to hear uh Steve's report.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good evening. Uh as Mary stated, I'd like to echo it. We're strong financially right now. Um we just, to give you a side story, we just finished a rating call with Standard and Poor's. And the analyst from Standard and Poor's said, he goes, it seems like you guys are almost doing business as usual during the pandemic right now. That's really testimony to all the controls and the efforts that we put in, that we're operating on a day to day basis, you know, normal basis and during this time. Some highlights that we have, um the council knows uh we had about five point six million in free cash certified this year. Uh our our levy is not anywhere near capacity. I think it's around two million below capacity. In fact, that offers us a ton of flexibility. Uh it was noted by the ratings agency that that was fairly unusual. It was uh, it was nice to see. Our values have increased, um home values, residential values. And they remain, the indication is that they remain steady. If we had a crystal ball, I think we'd all probably hit the lottery and not be here. Uh that being said, it should remain steady. Our tax rate for fiscal year twenty two went down seventy seven cents from fiscal year twenty one, and we didn't touch a dime of reserves. That is, I can't even explain how incredible that is due to the fact that part of that is the values went up, but also when you hear of other towns using free cash to lower the tax rate, that works for the current year. The next year, they have to make up that. It's a one time revenue. They have to make up for that money the next year. So we don't have to do that here in East Long Meadow. So that was a phenomenal thing to have. As I say, we um we had a bond rating. We have not gotten the bond rating back from Standard and Poor's yet. But we expect it to remain the same, which is double A plus with the stable outlook. Again, very unusual and it's a good thing to, it's a nice testimony to us. Uh we'll get later on in the uh meeting, we're gonna have a the quarterly uh financial update. The revenues right now, to kind of give you a preview, if you will, uh the trailer is that we're trending at forty six percent of what we budgeted for revenues right now through December thirty first. Uh that's without taking account uh motor vehicle excise, which doesn't isn't even issued until February, March anyway. So uh we're going along right where we should be, I think. Um expenditure wise, we're consistent and we we're, there's no areas of concern to me. The uh fund balance for twenty one increased by uh three million dollars. And this getting to more of the system Mary was talking about, uh our capital projects. As Mary stayed with the ARPA money, we took care of three large infrastructure ones uh and are able to not have to bond for that. The Council on Agent Boiler is the only project of five major projects we did, we're doing that we took out of free cash. And that was a hundred and twenty eight thousand roughly. The core network from last year was an emergency situation, but we were able to handle it without touching any reserves. Again, that's it's fairly unheard of. Uh going to our balances, our O P E P trust is right now about ten million dollars, almost ten point one million dollars. Uh during the call, the man said, he goes, the analyst said frankly, we're better than most committees. Uh we're we're going along, we're making annual contributions to it. We have some excess, we can put more in. We have a plan in place every year to put something in. And the same with the stabilization fund is around three point five million, three point four million, and that's increased uh from last year also. In our um in our community preservation fund balances, the open space has a hundred and seventy three. The total is about one point nine million. Open space being a hundred and seventy three thousand, historic being two hundred and seventy six. Formal housing, two eight eight, and undesigned being about a million eight thousand. Uh their estimated revenue for this year for the CPC is going to be roughly around a hundred and seventy two. Right now, that's what we estimate. Uh we have not, I don't believe we've gotten the state um contribution yet, so it could increase. Uh so overall, we're very steady, we're very strong, uh and I think we're um we're doing well.
Thanks, Steve. I would I would just like to add, um you mentioned the seventy seven cent uh drop in the tax rate and that I I see is is great, but what's even better is there was no detrimental consequence to services to the residents while that seventy seven cent drop took place. And I would just like to commend Marion, the department head, for being able to make that happen without destroying services for our residents. Other than that, um I'm hoping that uh tonight's the financial report helps the school committee going forward. And Sarah, I would ask, do you have any questions for the council at this point in time?
I don't think we have any questions. Um we obviously appreciate the opportunity to begin this process much earlier. Um I think it will allow um to use Mary's words for the process to be more open and explanatory in nature and allow us to engage in more frequent conversations so that we're able to present what is happening in the current context of the schools, um given the fact that we are still um dealing with the effects and the impacts of the past few years because they're ongoing within schools relative to the pandemic. I know Mr. Smith um did prepare um just a few statements of terms of a broad overview relative to where we are as um a district, so it's okay for him to speak for a few moments, but um in terms of questions, I know I don't have any unless other members of the committee do.
Hi, Gordon.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with all of you and uh having a conversation and a discussion. Um similar to what uh Mary was saying, uh we're using our S R grants to kind of build our infrastructure. Basically, what we're using that federal money for is to put in place first and foremost supports that school systems may not have to deal with certain aspects of the pandemic. Um that can be anything from P P E to uh counseling, um adjustment counselors and other um social emotional supports. Some of that's going to be in the short term. Some of that, unfortunately, I think is going to be with us for quite a while. We're both investing in new curriculum and looking at um software that can help us in the future. Support students uh that we know based on assessments that they took this fall and based on state assessments have learning gaps. But we're also seeing that they have many more social, emotional and mental health needs. Uh and I mean, something that was striking uh that in October, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry and the Children's Hospital Association declared a national emergency for children's mental health. And and that's that's not just Massachusetts or the nation. I think that's the world. But taking it uh to a local aspect, we've partnered for the last four years um with the River Valley Counseling Group. They have provided, in addition to our counseling staff, therapeutic services for students in all five schools. They have told us now that uh we have hit their capacity and they can no longer take referrals. Um so we have students in need right now that unfortunately, we're not able to offer those services to. So that's something we're seeing and working through as we go forward. And so we're we're eager to continue to discuss openly how we move from some of these federal funds to an operational budget that makes sense to allow students to be supported and allow the school system to grow.
All right. Well, Gordon, thank you and thank you for the the entire school committee for joining us this evening and accomplishing this all mandated by the charter. Um I'd like to give you the option to be able to formally close your meeting while in our session here before we continue back with our Thank you.
Thank you.
If we move along to under financial uh financial matters number two, which is the approval of community preservation project. Stated previously, but Jonathan's here and before we um I I guess maybe you can give us a brief explanation before we entertain a motion for discussion purposes regarding the uh motion for the seventy five hundred dollars for the preservation fund for open space. Jonathan?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, President Kane, uh for having me to discuss these uh different applications that are before you this evening. Uh so the first one, uh this is the um the phase two of the of an original project that the council had approved approximately about a year or so ago. Uh so this, uh we are asking for seventy five hundred dollars. Seventy five hundred dollars uh coming out of the open space and recreation fund to help um uh complete the sidewalk that is currently um a part of its um, you know, covering the dog park. Presently, this would link it all together uh so that the sidewalk would cover the, basically the perimeter of the dog park located at Heritage Park. Um and uh so I, with that, I can take any questions.
Questions from the council before we entertain a motion?
So Mike, um, okay. I will ask a question if you don't mind then. How does this fit into the master plan of Heritage Park? Um in December, Mary got the capital planning committee together um along with various departments to look at this. I came out of there with a uh reviewed optimism that uh the development of the park would probably be going forwards. Uh maybe not exactly how presented. But I I mean, I'm looking at this saying, okay, the dog park, well, so if the dog park's moved, if it's adjusted, if we have to downsize it, we're gonna be losing this money.
And from, from the last time, John, um, I wasn't under the impression, I knew we were doing um the last time you came forwards, I think it was four thousand something for the small portion of the dog park. I didn't realize that would be phase one of two, and am I to assume that if we continue, there's a phase three at your meeting, they talked about connecting the main walk that comes in to the actual dog park? Because that's missing a whole section and people are walking through mud just to get to the dog park.
Uh, so to my knowledge, this is the only other phase. Um, what I will say about um, you know, that project, I know having um, you know, watched the entirety of that pro- that uh meeting that took place in December, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of those plans, I believe because of the location of the dog park, um, it's advantageous in the sense that a lot of the major development that's being proposed um, would be kind of off to the, towards the other side of the park, so the access road, um, the fields and some of the other things that were proposed. So um, I'm not sure if it would affect it, um, but definitely that would be something, um, you know, we would not wanna, you know, waste resources if, if in fact, um you know, the park was going to be, you know, moved somewhere else or having to be, you know, um, something were to happen to it, so.
Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. I got bounced out of the meeting, so I don't know what I missed. Um, I watched the CPC meeting discussing this motion. I also watched the December meeting of Ralph's Capital Committee. And my takeaway is from that was like you, Jonathan, I did not get a sense that there was any discussion about the dog park. All of the area that seemed to be considered for possible renovation or improvement was just outside of the dog park. In fact, when um Bruce Fenny got up and sort of carved out the area, he ran his finger down and it went right around the dog park and didn't include it at all. And so I'm thinking it's, it's located on the, on the perimeter of the property next to the parking lot for the big Y. Where else would they put it? It's a perfect spot for it right there in terms of access. Um, Phil Abear, who spoke at the CPC meeting, indicated when he accessed the dog park, he had to walk through the entire park to get there. And it was, the access was not comfortable or convenient, and whereas doing it from the outside, it's perfect. So I don't know what the issue is with even wanting to move it.
Um, I'm gonna go with Connor, Ralph, and then um right behind him, Connor?
Thanks, Mike. Um, from that uh capital planning meeting that we had, the map that was presented that I was looking at, it does not that this is final, but it does say relocated dog park and the new position of it makes it look like it's further back than where it is closer to the proposed basketball courts. So I suppose the plan could be modified, but it does make it seem like we'd lose a bit of what we'd be spending money on tonight.
So so i- if I may, Michael?
Please.
So the, so Connie, you're saying that the actual location of the dog park in that particular plan that you were looking at your meeting is not where it is now?
Yeah, it looks like it's set further back to the wetlands and the basketball courts that are proposed are closer to the parking lot, kind of where the dog park is now.
Okay, that was unclear, so I appreciate that clarification.
Ralph?
So um, I also just wanted to follow up. I know currently that it appears as though that there's an entrance from, um, I'm gonna say the state Y parking lot into park. Um, I had a conversation with our D P W superintendent and he basically said to me that they are looking to close that up because they wanna make sure that people enter the park through the entrance through the main section and not through private property. Um, that was also one of the discussions um with redoing all of Heritage Park. Um, I brought up the question, are we gonna fence in the whole park? And that's an option and we're, we're looking at it and it's for safety purposes. So, you know, a- as far as the location of the walks and stuff, I I feel as though they're gonna be changing um just from looking at the, the plans and all. And I just don't feel comfortable spending more money on something that we're not positive of yet.
Are there any other questions for Jonathan at this point before we entertain a motion? Say, as you all know, we do have options with the motion. It, it sounds a little bit, and I, I get the same impression that um there might be more information that we would be seeking prior to approving, so I would hope that we could uh bring this motion forward and if we're not comfortable with it, maybe table it until more information is provided, maybe something that coincides with a little bit more of a master plan. But that's what we said, I will entertain a motion.
Just a, for clarification, I'm just picking up the I have the council, doesn't seem to be wanting the motion to move forward if we're gonna table it, is it even, should I still make the motion, not, not nonetheless?
Should just move to table it.
Exactly. So what I can do instead with the permission is I will move to uh uh table the matter asking to approve seventy five hundred dollars from the community preservation funds from the open space and recreation account for the bark park phase two until our next meet or I'm, I'm asking as a question or until we get more in from a, a more finalized plan. So, either or.
So I don't think we have to do a specific date for tabling it. Um, I think once you table it, we can bring it back off the table at any time that, that we so choose, correct?
I know historically, you know, like we used to always put like a date just to have it as a bench, um, like a benchmark that date. But either ways, again, I'm, I'm at the pleasure of uh, of the, of the council and just trying to uh make sure that this doesn't stay in limbo.
Um, Jonathan, do you have a, a, an idea when you might have more information at this council?
So a lot of this information is new to me. I haven't had a chance to have any real discussions on um this master plan for Heritage Park. I know it's been tossed around. I had the chance to um, you know, listen to the entirety of the um uh, of the, of the meeting that took place last month. Um, so I think I would probably feel a little bit more comfortable trying to get some more information on, you know, if there's a final, you know, master plan that's going through or if there's still discussions of where things will be located. Um, because of course I don't wanna see um, you know, this seventy five hundred get, you know, wasted. I think it's um, you know, very good application and I think it, the dog park serves a lot of people, but I would hate um to see that money get wasted. So I would feel, you know, comfortable with um, you know, addressing this matter at another time when, you know, when, when it's um desirable for the council.
Okay, well, can I make it a suggestion that you, you could reach out to Jeanie? Once you have that information and we can bring it back on, on the agenda. I, I don't feel that we have to tie it with a date right now and um put it on an agenda just to remove it because you don't have the paperwork in place. Would that, would that be sufficient?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
And that, in that case with um, through the chair, uh, since the motion has not been seconded, I will make another motion that we take no action on the proposed motion to approve seventy five hundred from the community preservation funds for an open space and recreation account for the bark park phase two until such future time where the council uh receives more information that would make such a, a, a motion ripe for discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, um, I believe I, Marilyn, did you second that motion?
It, I certainly did.
Well, thank you both. Don, thank you for the, the uh motion. Uh, that's what I was driving at with um Jonathan, as you know, we're, we're, we're not trying to um, you know speak, I, I wanna say defunct this operation here, but um it will serve everyone better, I think, if we have more information and I believe that would help you as well.
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you, everyone. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Connor?
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think overall it's a good idea. I just hope that as a result of this, we'll just do it in the right order, so we're all on the same page with it going forward. And I think we'll know further as we get further through the budget process, what everyone's appetite is for the Heritage Park project, which would then help us make this decision about the dog park.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, uh, this requires a roll call vote. Uh, I am a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Um, Jonathan, while we have you, um, I'll entertain a motion.
I have that, Mike. I moved to approve fifty six thousand five hundred sixty dollars from community preservation funds from the open space and recreation account for a lacrosse wall ball.
I will second that.
And we have a motion and a second. I, I would ask Jonathan, is there any uh, before we start the discussion, would you like to give us some brief history on?
Sure. Um, also, the applicant, I believe, should be in the um audience, Jeff Morenow, so if there's any other um questions that I'm not able to answer on the project, um, he would be um, a good source as well to ask questions for. So I'll just give you, you know, a very brief rundown on it. So it's um, uh, the ask is fifty six thousand five sixty, so twenty six thousand five sixty would be going towards the um, the wall. So when, you know, um, students or other individuals that would be using this, uh, they, you know, practice, you know, lacrosse or whatever type of sport where, you know, you can, you know, put a ball to a wall. Um, so that's twenty six thousand five sixty and then thirty thousand for um, you know, a surface area, a small surface area. Um, so that, you know, they're not in, you know, grass or mud or whatnot, so it just um, uh, you know, makes it look neat and tidy along the, along the bottom um, of the structure. Uh, so part of the funds will also be coming from private donations. Um, E Leaf uh will also be donating some uh, you know, resources as well. Uh, this has gone before the school committee. Uh, the school committee uh has endorsed the plan. Um, this has been also endorsed by the athletic director, uh, and then also unanimously supported um by our um committee. Uh, and, and as Steve, you know, alluded to earlier, um, and I'll say this about all the projects, um you know, we are in extremely strong financial footing and I think it'll, um, not just for these projects, but future projects in the next few months or few years, it'll put us in a really good position to invest in a lot of different projects for the community. I know the matching rate from the state, I believe, was a thirty eight or thirty nine percent this year. Um, it's one of the largest, at least from what I've based on, you know, there's an available database that the state provides. Uh, so we are in ex- in an extremely strong financial footing, even uh for the rec balance, which is a little bit lower than the others, um, but still has a fairly healthy balance to it. Um, and, and what uh the, everybody from the council of should have seen all the different designs and everything. The wall was designed, um, I believe by a, uh, lo- you know, a local high school student, um, having this, you know, Spartan logo on it. Um, so this has uh definitely been a collaborative effort by a lot of people um to bring this project together. Um, so with that, I'll, you know, uh, entertain any questions.
I, I'd like to add myself and Ralph worked on this a little bit today and um, it was always nice to learn about the location and I believe the location, correct me if I'm wrong, was headed down toward the track.
Yes, so it'd be along the uh fence area approximately uh closer to um the pond or the um the step in, in more interior side of the football field.
So that's a, that's a positive. Uh, number two, I like the foundation that it's going to be setting on because it's basically trenched out and filled with stone. So if the wall didn't need to be moved or they decided there was a better location for it, it's, it's a pretty easy move, not, if not a costly uh project of saw cutting concrete and trying to remove a, a footing to hold this, these panels up. Um, lastly, um, I think like the rank that the, uh, the majority of the residents from East Bonnet would be able to enjoy use of this as well. Jonathan?
I'm sorry?
Um, I was, I was just, just wanted to hear that um, like, like the, the rings that we're using down in the center, there, the residents would be able to use this wall as well as um, you know, students.
Yes, yes, I'm, I apologize, I didn't hear the full question. Um, yes, so it would be available, you know, to the entire community, so it's not um, you know, within a, a specific location where you'd have to go um, onto something, you can, you know, walk onto it. I know people use the um tennis courts there. Uh, there's other recreational areas across the high school that people use for different practices or, you know, getting together for sports and whatnot. Um, so this would be a really big help to the um, you know, big uh group of people, the high schoolers and other of those age students that do lacrosse and other types of sports where you, you know, need to practice like that. Um, so and, and there's a number of other communities, I think Long Meadow and, and potentially I think Wilbraham also have um a similar structures at one of their schools uh in their community. Uh, so I think this would be a really um good asset for those um, you know, athletes, um, student athletes um, that are just, you know, looking to practice on a um stronger surface like that, so it would be open to the entire community.
What I also learned was the, the, the Astro turf that surrounds the structure, um, you might have mentioned it, but you, you know what the ground would look like after um one season of not having any Astro turf, people would be uh in mud, no grass. And um, that's not what our track looks like on the inside, so we, we certainly don't, don't need a, a mud pit, if you will, surrounding the structure. So uh, the reason I bring that up is because that's, that's, you know, probably close to fifty percent of the cost of what you're looking for is for the Astro turf, not just for the wall itself. Um, that being said, uh, if you wanna continue any discussion on this, at this point in time, I would ask for a motion to approve and then we can follow the discussion if there's a second.
We already uh did make a motion. I do have just one other.
Just for Mike, no. Second on that motion, is that Marilyn? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the wall? Connor?
This one, uh, perhaps I missed it in your um overview, Jonathan. I know I saw in the application packet, there was um a letter from the athletic director, but I just wanna make sure that the superintendent and the school committee are fine since this would be on their property.
Yeah, so they had a, um, I believe at their November fifteenth meeting, uh, they had a discussion on it uh in a, in a vote to endorse it. Um, so they are aware of it uh and are supportive of the project, um, but it was important, I wanted to make sure that, you know, considering this is on school property and before it went um, to the council this evening, um, that they were not only aware of it, but that they were um in support of the project uh as well as the athletic director who would, um, I would imagine be, you know, making sure that it's um, you know, kept up and, 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 you know, nothing happens to it, being that it's gonna be on high school property, so.
Great, thanks for confirming.
Ralph?
So Jonathan, two questions. Um, first, our rec commission. Um, I am assuming, well, actually, I know they're on board with this, um, but I didn't see any um information in your packet with regards to a vote on the rec commission.
Yeah, so I am, they did not have a formal vote that I'm aware of. I know that informally, um, you know, our C P C representative uh was in favor of the project. Um, and I know I think of some other individuals um informally have indicated their support for it. Um, you know, I like when a committee, um, you know, that deals, you know, in that subject area, so whether it's historical or housing or whatnot, you know, indicates their support for a project, that's, I think, an important feature of, of a strong application. Uh, so that did not happen for this application, um, but I think that, um, you know, I would hesitate to guess that they would be fairly supportive of the project and they've, you know, been made aware of the project as well.
Mike, just a follow up. Um, so I was under the understanding any recreation needed to go through them, so I called Tom K. Um, who's the chairman, and he basically said that they were a hundred percent for it. And off of his memory, he thought they had voted for it. Um, again, he couldn't put a date or anything to it. Um, but I just wanted to follow up with that. Um, I know we had discussed uh the turf, um, because there is language within um the CP uh CPA funding, which talks about turf or Astro turf or fields. And um, I don't think that uh pains to this situation as you've documented for. And I don't think that pangs to this situation as you've documented for me, which was great. The one other thing that I noticed, being a contractor that I am, the only thing I couldn't find is the preparation of the base material under the AstroTurf. The thirty thousand dollar estimate for the AstroTurf or the estimate for that came in and that was just to put down the AstroTurf based on the assumption that the base was already prepped. The wall contained just the base under the wall. So if there's additional fees, who's responsible for them? Is it's going to be private funds? Do we know? I think Jeff's in the audience too.
Yeah, I think that might be a good question for him about some of those more specifics of the project, so if he's able to.
Right, now, Don, if you see Jeff in the audience, could you bring him in?
He's on his way.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff. Hello, hold on, let me get off mute and I can try to show my picture somehow, start video, I guess.
Okay, we're, we're rolling here, did you hear?
Okay, there we are, great, yeah, Ralph, great question. So the prep work is covered, so that's going to be covered by the general contractor. E-leaf is covering that, so I think it's the nine thousand dollar number that's in there. That covers the general contractor work, which is going to do the prep work for the wall itself and also the prep work, the prep work for, you know, whatever needs to be done on each side of the wall for the turf to be installed.
Okay, and the only reason I'm asking is, they were pretty specific when they wrote it up, that it was to cover the base of the wall and then to do lowman seed. So, like I said, I just, as long as you guys are going to have it covered and if there's any extra costs, I'm okay with that. Not that you will be, but.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I felt voting with myself, I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Jeff, thank you for your time as well.
Thank you, thank you all for your time and consideration of the project, appreciate it and all you do.
All right, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at B two C, motion to approve thirty-five thousand, Ralph?
Yes. Motion to approve thirty-five thousand dollars from community preservation funds from the historic preservation account for records management and preservation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion or any information needed on, on this motion?
So I'll just say, you know, this is definitely a very passion project area, you know, town history. I'm a big history buff, so when Jeannie brought this, I, you know, proposal to us, I had a chance to tour the basement of the town hall, that was an interesting experience. There's a lot of old material. And I think what's really interesting about this application is, you know, it's not just, you know, maybe some really well-known document. It's documenting those, you know, important, small moments across the town's history. So, you know, selectmen board meeting minutes in, you know, the nineteen fifties or the nineteen seventies or even, you know, the eighteen nineties and kind of seeing where the town is at. So a lot of, and I'll let Jeannie speak on it, a lot of it is going to be that preservation effort, organizing things. And this has been something that a lot of communities have started doing and also using CPC funds for. So there's been a precedent in recent years for it. And, and this has garnered the support of Mary, of Bethany, our, you know, former director of planning and also has gone through the historical, historical committee and was, you know, unanimously approved by our committee. But with that, I'll pass it along if Jeannie has anything to say.
Before we bring Jeannie and Jonathan, I wanted to thank you for the letter that you sent me on December twenty-first as the chair for the committee promoting this as well. This is a no-brainer. I, I think we all realize that we, we need to preserve our history and records, not have them floating in water down in the basement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'm a yes, Ralph?
Nope, before we go, Jeannie, is this all the records or is this just a portion of them? And I know this doesn't include the scanning and microfilming. I mean, is that something we're looking to do later?
Right, so this is the basement portion, which stores most of the town department's records in the town hall. So it's, it's four days of assessing everything in there and looking at the state's retention schedule and perhaps we can purge some of those according to the schedule already. Then organizing, storaging, storage and preservation of the records. It does not include the imaging. And Bethany, yeah, when she was the planning director, showed some interest in that, but I held her off because we don't even know what's down there. So once we organize, store everything appropriately, see what we have, then we can go to imaging some of those documents. It's definitely covered by CTC funds. And there's a, there's a water problem down there. There's a dehumidifier about the size that I use at my house, that's in the packet that I gave to you. So once, if approved and we get this all organized and stored appropriately for the kind of records that are there and put on database, I would look at an appropriate dehumidifying system for that basement and for the size it's down there, but not, this does not include imaging.
So Mike, can I follow up?
Please.
If I remember right from my planning board days, Donna used to run into the attic and had multiple records up there also. Is that something that we're going to look to the future as like a phase two to organize those? Because she used to have a heck of a time and I'm assuming nothing has really been changed in the attic from, from my days, so.
I haven't, I haven't been in the attic, but I would say this is the bulk of it in the basement. If we could do this first as the base project and start there, then maybe integrate other. I know the old schoolhouse, Little Red Schoolhouse has some records over there too. And there may be a chance of maybe using the COA basement for some storage also. But I would say let's start with the bulk of the records downstairs and get a, get a good, good sense of what's down there and then build on that.
Makes sense to me, thank you.
Okay, well, start with a roll call, I'm a yes, Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like B three, Marilyn, motion to approve funding to seven thousand dollars.
I move to approve funding up to seven thousand dollars from free cash for a voting machine and related accessories and polling signage for new precinct.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion regarding the voting machine? And hearing and seeing none, Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A, motion to approve Massachusetts Cultural Council Grant, Kathy?
I move to approve the Massachusetts Cultural Council Grant of one thousand five hundred dollars to the Council on Aging.
Excuse me, we skipped stuff.
Yes.
I went from B three, seven thousand to B six A, correct?
That's the motions, but the agenda, Steve has some reports to give.
Yeah, we've got the financial report from Steve and the quarterly report.
Thirty-five thousand, we did.
Yep, so we're on B four, Mike.
B four, financial report?
That's correct.
Steve?
Thank you, counselor. This will be fairly short, you got a good overview in the joint meeting with the school committee. We're doing, as I said, we're doing pretty well. We had a ratings call for our bond rating. It's expected to stay, stay the same due, due to the strong financial position as well as our financial management. It's going on right now and the department heads, from Marion down to the departments deserve great, you know, kudos for that. The, I'd like to also mention that Diane and Diane Bishop and Don Fonte are Director of Assessing as well as our treasure collector, got our third quarter tax bills out on time. There were some issues with UNIS and they were able to overcome them and get them out. I don't know, as you all probably know, if we don't have them in the mail by December thirty-first, they're not due until May first. So it's, it's a big deal and they got it out on time and did, they did a great job. Additionally, we should have our twenty-one audit draft copy of it by the end of the month, beginning of next month. I just, the Tom Scanlon Associates are currently doing the single audits of the school as well as the CARES slash ARPA money. And so they're finishing that up and they should have a draft to me for review in a couple of weeks anyways. The grants will get to that later point in time. The budget versus actual, as I said during the earlier, we are trending well. Is it a hundred percent? No, but it's pretty close and we're doing, we're doing well. We're holding the line as far as our expenses go and we are getting the revenue we're expecting. And so I see no significant issues where we are right now.
Steve?
Yep. Counselor? Oh, okay, yeah, that, that covers it.
So, Mike, if I may?
Yep, Ralph?
So Steve, I just have a question on bond rating. Double A positive sounds great to me, what's the highest it can go? Is there triple A?
Yes, the highest is triple A. And in the conversation we had with the rating agency, he said, and I quote, Massachusetts has a hard time because of two things, retirement and OPEB. And we're ahead of most people as far as OPEB, but really to get the triple A rating, you're going to be almost if not fully funded on those items. And we're, we're not at this point, we're in good shape, but we're not fully funded. He did mention that it's a very strong double A plus that he expects. Again, it hasn't been finalized yet, but that's what we're expecting to get.
And the bond rating basically determines what the interest rate is on the bonds, correct?
Correct, it helps us get a better rate. It's, it's our credit rating as a town.
Just confirming, that's all. Thank you.
All right, Steve, did you? What else did you have for us? You have the financial report, grant approval?
The last, the last item, yeah, the next item on the agenda would have been the budget versus actual, which we kind of covered. And then the next would be the two grants for Council of Aging and for the IT grant that Mary alluded to in her report.
All right, would you like to continue on?
Sure. The council, the next is the Council on Aging Grant that the Mass Cultural Council granted them. Fifteen hundred dollars is for their festival program. And I know Erin's in the audience if she, if there's any questions on it. But they have it and they use it to, I guess, gather some data too for the Mass Council, Cultural Council to see who's utilizing it and that sort of thing, I guess.
Okay, Paul, there for a minute before we move to six B, there is a motion. I believe it's B six A and Kathy?
Yes, I move to approve the Massachusetts Cultural Council Grant of one thousand five hundred dollars to the Council on Aging.
And I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion based on Steve's presentation? Seeing none, I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Steve, could you give us a little info on six B?
Sure.
Regarding the technology grant?
Sure, as Mary said in her report, Karen and Ryan worked together and got the grant for a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and three dollars. It's a, for a disaster recovery and they will utilize it to help ensure that, God forbid, if we get flooded, snow or any other kind of disaster, we'll be able to continue our operations without any interruption service to the town.
Thanks, Steve. Don, would you have a motion for the Community Compact Cabinet?
I do. I'll make a motion to approve the Community Compact Cabinet CCC Information Technology Grant of one hundred fourteen thousand five hundred and three dollars to the town of East Long Meadow.
Second.
Thank you, Don and Marilyn, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Steve, thanks for all the information, it was very helpful. We have the old business under new business, we have the dementia-friendly East Long Meadow Initiative. And Don Matthew, I see Erin in the audience here, could you bring her in, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Erin.
Hi, Erin.
Hi, Erin.
There you are. Long time no see, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you all doing?
We're doing fine.
Good.
Thank you for giving this initiative a little time on your agenda this evening.
Whatever you can enlighten us with, we appreciate regarding the dementia-friendly East Long Meadow Initiative.
I can't hear you very well, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Would you like to give us a little background on this subject matter?
Sure. I am sort of reigniting the torch that had sort of been lit by Lisa Fontaine and Carolyn Brennan before COVID extinguished the flame. Dementia-friendly is a local, well, it's a statewide grassroots effort sort of put together at the local level to improve the quality of life for people living with dementia and their caregivers. We have partnered with Care One at Redstone and the Alzheimer's Association so far to start creating an action plan for this initiative that will allow for increased awareness and trainings for different segments of the commercial and retail segment of the population in East Long Meadow as well as first responders and other folks working for the municipality who may be face-to-face with somebody who is at the early stages of dementia and may be able to refer them to the Council on Aging for more support or just make their experience with the town more pleasurable and an easier experience for them as caregivers and people who have dementia.
Thanks, Erin, we appreciate that. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to continue to take appropriate action.
I move to continue to take action to improve our community's dementia-friendly capabilities, thereby optimizing the health, well-being and community engagement of people living with dementia and their care partners by supporting a dementia-friendly East Long Meadow initiative.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion or questions for Erin? Hearing and seeing none, I'm a yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Erin, thank you for your time this evening and thank you for being patient while we work through the agenda.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
You too. Okay, under B two, review and release of executive session minutes, Kathy, you helped tremendously with this task. Jump in.
Okay. One of the things that is enunciated under the open meeting law is the, I don't, I don't know if it's a policy, but there, the parameter that from time to time, the president of the body, whether it's select board or council, must review the executive session minutes to determine whether or not they can be released for, to the public. And by that, I mean, if someone requests them, now, that they could be released. Released does not mean post on the website as open minutes would be. Or based on the nature of the executive session, they should be retained. And so in the And so in December, when it was time to look at this, we try to look at it at least once a year, give or take. I helped Mike with this, and so the memo that you have from Mike before you essentially lists all of the executive sessions from the inception of the council on July 1st of 2016, all the way up until November 9th of this past year, 2021. And you can see, I've indicated whether it should be, based on the topic, be retained or released. A number of those were related to strategies for particular litigation with various entities. And you retain it while you're still in negotiations, and then once there is agreement and closure on the litigation, it can be released. So you will see that accordingly, next to some of the litigation topics. I want to just ask Jeannie one thing, on the technical, I think it's just a typo. On January 14, 2020, the litigation with Spark Energy, I think that should be a retain, and not to be determined.
Oh, okay, I was looking at the one underneath it, too.
Yes, they should both be.
Okay, okay, I can change that, and you can, the motion can be amended to reflect that.
And that's all I have, it's pretty straightforward.
Thanks. That being said, under D2, Ralph, could we have a motion to retain, release, or retain the executive session minutes?
Sure, so I motioned to release or retain reviewed executive session minutes from July 1st, 2016 through November 9th, 2021, as presented.
I will second with the caveat that in the outline dated January 6th, regarding review of executive session minutes, that the January 14, 2020 matter be changed from release as printed to retain, and that'll be my second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ralph?
One thing, I thought that, I thought it wasn't changing release to retain, but changing to be determined to retain.
Yes.
It is.
Okay, so should we amend that?
So I think that's what Don actually meant, but he said release. So it's the January 14th, 2020 litigation with Spark Energy shall be retained.
Okay, that is, I agree, I'll second that.
And I'm sure Jackie has that. So, any further discussion? It's like we're all on the same page here. Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Connor?
Yes.
Six zero. Summary items for our next council meeting? Anyone have any action items? I know we had a brief discussion with Jonathan, we did table that one A item, but it is not date specified. So if I'm not seeing anything, we will move into executive session. So because of the open meeting law, I will make this motion to move into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigating position regarding the case of falling to letting against the County of East Long Meadow, then return to open session for the purposes of adjournment term.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second?
Mr. President, before we take a vote, I need to recuse myself from the conversation, because this individual is known to me personally, and I would like to just exit the meeting at this point. I don't believe it's prudent for me even to vote on the motion.
That is approved, thank you for joining us this evening, and we will continue.
All right, thanks, everyone. Take care.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and a second, I just want to, before we formally adjourn, thank everybody for your contribution this evening, there was quite a bit of reading and time needed to work through many of the different facets of tonight's agenda, and I appreciate all your time. Jeannie and Jackie, thanks for your help, and Don Mackey, thanks for being able to run both these meetings and tie our school committee into it as well. We are adjourning at 8:10 with a roll call vote, I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
Thank you all.